More folks.
Should we be muted while we're, while we're not speaking, or will that help?
Definitely would if you press the mute button in the bottom left-hand corner.
But don't forget to unmute when you're called or when you're trying to talk. Too many people forget that.
My best to catch that. Hey, Kim, welcome. Let's see, do we have Kim on? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello? All right, I think we're just waiting on Tony. And. Should be it. Who's got the dog?
Wasn't me.
Wasn't me. Just as heads up, we are live on the city's website. As soon as Tony joins us, we'll go ahead and get started. If you could, there is a mute button in the bottom left-hand corner. Feel free to click that. Just as Marie pointed out, make sure you unmute yourself if you want to speak. We are recording today's session for our clerks to transcribe, and it's also going to be live on the city's website.
I forgot, if you hit the space bar, it will also unmute your, without having to click the button, just hit your space.
Oh. Good point. Thank you. That's a pro tip. You must have been doing this a while, Marie.
Try about, this might be 12 or 15. Zoom meeting.
Oh my.
Today?
No, 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 in about three weeks.
Anybody tried texting Tony?
I've seen him running earlier today.
I've talked to him, I know he's.
Maybe he's making another TikTok video. I've enjoyed balls.
He could be.
Saw him on a Zoom call earlier today, so I know he's definitely set up.
He's set up. He's not answering me, so my guess is he's trying to get on. Yeah, I should text his kids.
Someone will find him.
You can't find the link. Let me forward it to you. I'll forward it to you right now. Bye. All right, give me a sec.
We'll give President Dolez a couple of minutes to get connected, then we'll go ahead and get started. Hopefully everyone's enjoying Monday. It was a nice day to get out and be in the nice sun a little bit.
No, worked all day.
Not as fun.
Me too.
A lot of us did.
That here all day. Been making masks? That, well, I made some over the weekend. I haven't done any lately. Or none today, and I'm too tired to think about it.
All right, I just sent that to him again. Give him a second, see if he comes on here. Do you see him trying to get on yet, Eddie?
Not yet.
Just make sure it went and it's not sitting in my outbox.
He's a teacher, he should be a pro at this.
Yep, it went, so he should be. He'll be coming.
I do see him. There we go.
There he is.
Like he's connecting. All right, President Dolez, we have you.
It's crazy, I couldn't find the link. I don't know if I missed it, zipped it out, looked in the wrong file, I don't know where it went.
We get a complimentary tour of your house, too, as part of the.
Art of his procession.
Okay, all right, we in? We're all good?
We're all good. We are live on the city's website as well, and this session is being recorded. We've got everyone, I believe, at this point.
Very good. All right, so we should, we can probably get started. Jennifer, was there any correspondence from the public?
There was not, no.
There was none, so we have no public comment. So I guess we'll go right to the committees. So Kim, if you want to do finance?
Sure. We have, the first is a resolution to effective immediately, Jamestown City Council hereby suspends the hiring freeze instituted by Resolution Number 200201C03 and Resolution 200611B17 and authorized to fill the following positions due to the essential nature of the positions. Three police officers in the Jamestown Police Department, which are all funded in the 2020 general fund budget, and these positions are vacant for two retirements that are coming this week, if I'm right, chief?
Yes.
And then, and one resignation. And those positions that were retired were talked about, chief, you mentioned last fall. If anybody doesn't remember, I'm sure he can add his comments about that.
Yeah, they were the two anticipated retirements that we had.
Okay, any questions?
Just one quick question. Chief, do you already have a list that you can pull from now or for canvassing, or how does that work when you replace them?
Yeah, we've already done that. In fact, today was the final interview. We interviewed 14 candidates for these positions.
Awesome.
Out of the 14, how many were residents?
One.
That's the hard part. We are not getting residents to fulfill and do well on these exams and can fulfill these positions, though.
We had, we had quite a few applicants from Mary County, which we've been seeing over the last several years.
That's interesting. Why do you think that is?
People are looking for jobs.
Oh, okay, well, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions? The second resolution we have is again related to personnel. It is resolved that effective immediately, the Jamestown City Council hereby suspends the hiring freeze instituted by Resolution Number 200201C03 and Resolution Number 200611B17 authorized to fill the following position due to the essential nature of the position. One personal computer specialist funded in the 2020 general fund budget, and this person, this position is vacant due to a disability retirement. Okay, any questions on that one?
Kim, can I just jump in there for a second? The, this position is provisional pending the official disability retirement.
Okay.
I will, I will add to that, that we, we did interview for that, and we have selected someone for the position pending the voting of this resolution. That person is a city resident, and we'll have more information at the next work session for you guys on that person.
Great. Anything else? Okay, the third resolution resolved that the mayor be and he hereby is authorized to execute change order number one to the 2019 sidewalk ramps phase one contract with RPatty Concrete Excavating LLC, PO Box 3081, Jamestown, New York, 14702, to include the following changes. Add 943.55 square foot of flat work, six inch at 1750 a square foot, 1,889 square feet flat work at four inches thick at $17 a square foot, 194.5 linear feet curb and gutter at $55 per linear foot, 327 square feet cast iron detectable warning plates at $48, two traffic manhole reset at $1,700 each, and 122.5 square feet removed concrete backfill landscape at $7 per square foot for a total increase of $79,275.25, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, what we did was we took the contract from last year. We talked to the contractor. He said he would honor his prices from last year. Basically, the upside for that was we didn't have to go out and rebid it. We don't have any staff really on right now, which has made it easier. So we just did a change order to add on to last year's contract. And that's for the Main Street project, which will finish up the lower, the lower section of Main Street, basically continuing on with what we did last year.
Okay.
Jeff, is that coming from chips money?
I'm sorry?
Is that chips money?
That would come out of the chips money, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Then we have two items for the discussion, and I'll just read what they both are and let Joe and Ryan discuss these. The 2019 general fund year-end summary, which you all might have gotten today, and the 2020 first quarter summary, which we have been provided, so Joe and Ryan, if you guys want to take it away.
Okay, we'll also have the third one, the first quarter sales tax.
Yep, I forgot that one, I'm sorry.
I'm going to start with this page right here, the 2019 year-end summary. I'll walk everybody through it. Feel free to interject with any questions as I, as I go through. We do have some good news for 2019. We'll start out at the top of the page where I just compare the, the original adopted budget versus the adjustments that the city council approved during the course of the year. So our original budget was $35,997,000 of property taxes and revenues, the same number of expenditures. That is because we did not appropriate any use of fund balance during 2019. The adjusted budget went up slightly to $36,350,000. Now, the actual results for 2019, we'll start by reviewing the previous year's fund balance. So the total fund balance that we ended 2018, the audited fund balance was a total of $3,439,000. Subtract from that what's considered non-spendable fund balance of $1,040,000. That is primarily, when we talk about non-spendable fund balance, the greatest portion of that is our prepayment to the New York State Retirement System. That's because we are on a calendar year, and the retirement system is on an April to March year, so when we make our payment to the retirement system in December, three months of that is prepaid. And over $750,000 of that is of the $1 million non-spendable. There's other things in there, some prepaid insurances and some inventory items. But we have total non-spendable $1,040,000. Again, we did not assign any fund balance for the 2019 budget, so that'd be zero. So our unassigned fund balance, the amount that we can use, you know, for operations and for, you know, any, any unforeseen emergencies or deficits, or to use in a future year to balance a budget, was just under $2,400,000, $2,399,000. So that's how we ended 2018. For 2019, and I have attached, you would have received your reports that detail all these, but our, our total revenues for 2019, which include all our property taxes and all miscellaneous revenues, totaled $36,957,000. All of our expenditures for last year totaled $35,563,000. So we were very fortunate to end with a surplus or formerly a excess of revenues over expenditures of $1,393,000. So our total unassigned fund balance at the end of 2019, and of course, this is unaudited at this point, but our unassigned fund balance is $3,786,000. Our non-spendable fund balance increased slightly to $1,046,000. We did not assign any fund balance when we passed and adopted the 2020 budget. So that is zero. So our total fund balance at the end of 2019 on an unaudited basis is $4,833,000. Any questions to this point?
I just had a quick question, Joe. Can you hear me?
Sure, yes.
Um. The retirement numbers here, have those been, number one, is that for, is that number for all departments?
Yeah, so the, for both the police and fire and the ERS.
And, and is that this number continued to go up on an annual basis?
You know, the, the retirement system payments fortunately have leveled off a little bit the, the last couple of years. As you know, so much of the the, you know, the two major factors in, in calculating how much we owe to the state retirement system is based on our salaries and the rates that the, that the state pension system charges us. And that is based on a five-year smoothing average of how the stock market returns. So, you know, fortunately, the stock market has been strong the last few years. And so rates have leveled off, although for 2020, you may recall when we passed the 2020 budget, I told you they were inching up slightly. So you can expect our payments to, for this year, this calendar year to be slightly higher, but, you know, it's still, it's still a very big number in our, in our budget, you know, $3.5 million for all our employees. But it has, it has leveled off in the last few years.
Does it make a difference at all that that there's different tier systems now where, where employees are having to contribute some of towards some of their pension, or is that really not making that much of a difference?
No, it does make a difference. If you look, there's a couple of good charts, I believe, you know, I provided in your 2020 budget. And there's one in there that actually compares, you know, where rates have gone, number one, over the past several years, and number two, it gives you an idea of the number of our employees that are in the different tiers. So in the example of, you know, police and fire, we have not had, had any tier one police enforcement in quite some time.
Sure.
The number of tier two police enforcement has decreased substantially, and the number of five was a short period. That's been pretty stable, but the number of police officers and firefighters in tier six has increased substantially over the last few years. So that, that, those new tiers, five and six, cost the city less because those employees are contributing, and the long-term rates that were charged by the state are less than the other tiers.
Okay.
Look in your budget, any questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so then we'll, we'll, we'll go to the middle of the page, and we'll, we'll dig into the details a little bit of why our year ended up like it did. So we'll start out with the, the revenues, and when we, when all these comparisons are made with the original budget. So our revenues finished 2.66% over what we budgeted last year, so that was a really good year for us on the revenue side. As you know, as I, we've, you know, as each quarter came out, and the good news of last year was, you know, we finished $515,000 dollars above budget in sales tax. That was, you know, something that we had mentioned a few times, and when we got our fourth quarter payment here a couple of months ago, we gave you this number here, $515,000. All forms of state aid finished over budget by $428,000. Primarily, that is the, the chips money. And that is the amount that we received over the original budget. We always, we always budget the base amount of chips, and then if we get the extreme winter, winter aid, and we get the pave New York aid, we, we book that later as a bonus. So of that $428,000 of, of state aid over budget, $322,000 is represented in chips aid. And we'll talk about that on the expenditure side in a minute here. As we had pointed out throughout the year, the, our payment in lieu of taxes from the BPU was, was very narrow last year as compared to budget, and we actually finished slightly under budget, about $9,400 net on the five divisions of the BPU in lieu of payments. And then if you just combine all our various other sources of revenue, we finished slightly over budget by a combined $25,000. So in total, our, our revenues exceeded budget by $959,000, which was very positive. On the expense side, it was just as positive in the fact that we were under budget on expenditures by 1.21%. Some of the, the components on salaries, we were slightly over by, you know, $112,000. The big savings on the year was in the benefit category, primarily on health insurance. As you know, some years we've had some, some terrible years in health insurance. The past three years, especially two of the past three years in particular, we finished in, in very good shape on our self-insured health insurance program. I, I, I really believe it. I think I've mentioned this a couple of times over the past year that we're starting to see, you know, some success in our wellness program that we've instituted several years ago. We can't put total emphasis on that because obviously, you know, people have sicknesses and, and surgeries and things of that nature. That will vary even with a, with a wellness program. But in total, it's, it's, I, I think we're really starting to see some positives. So the vast majority of the $1.347 million was in health insurance, but we are, we're also under, under, we're also under budget on New York State Retirement, both police and fire and ERS. We are under budget on social security, workers' compensation, and unemployment. So all the categories on the, on the benefit side were, were under budget, so that was positive. The next category, contractual, we were over budget by $131,000. The main culprit there, and as we pointed out several times last year, was our central garage where we were, we're about $200,000 over budget just in that category alone, just with all the repairs, all the parts, all the work we had to do last year to keep our fleet going. So if you look at the other departments collectively, they were about $70,000 under budget. Debt service was slightly, slightly under budget. That had to do with the refunding of the 2010 bond issue where we had savings. So we're on the budget about $6,900. Agencies were slightly over by $1,000, or some small expenditures regarding the Fenton that we were over there, about $1,000. Capital, we were over budget by $321,000, but again, if you look up before, and I, I just mentioned that we, our, our chips aid was, was an additional $321, $322,000. So really, that's a wash, the additional chips revenue we, we received and the additional capital that we were over budget washout. And then equipment, we were over budget by $353,000, and we'll talk about that in a minute. I consider that actually a positive, but we'll talk about that in detail in a minute here. So our net expenses were under budget by $434,000. You combine that with the revenues being over budget by $959,000, led to our positive variance for the year, so we ended up with a surplus of $1,393,000. Couple other things to point out here. Again, we've talked about sales tax, it was 8.31% over budget, that $515,000. We mentioned a couple of times additional chips revenue. And the other item, the state aid where we were over budget, we've booked the, we haven't received it actually from the state of New York yet, but we booked a receivable for $100,000 on the Veterans Memorial Project over on Logan Avenue that we expended last year. Hopefully, we'll receive that money from the state here shortly. For the fifth consecutive year, we did not have to amortize our payment to the, our police and fire retirement system payment. So that was another positive. Retirement system payments in total for both systems were $145,000 under budget. I talked about the health and dental insurance program being well under budget by a million and three. I mentioned the central garage being over budget. And, and the one thing back above where I talked about equipment being over budget by $354,000. If you recall, the council approved several times during the year, and especially at the end of the year, we approved a number of purchases for all departments in, in various areas using our contingency. So I, I think that was money well spent. There was a number of things that were needed from, from security cameras to DPW and Parks Equipment. If you recall, we purchased about 20 some thousand dollars worth of new computer equipment that we needed to be compliant with Windows 10. So all those things added up to $354,000. The one thing I'll point, I'll point out in regards to the, these financials being unaudited, our health claims run out amount is still yet to be determined. That is the amount that of, of claims that come through after the first of the year that, that were incurred prior to the end of the year. Now, currently, in fact, we just received our March report from Blue Cross. So the amount that we have as an accrual for that claims run out appears to be adequate. So I'm not expecting, unless something crazy happens between now and a couple of months when the audit's completed, at least in that particular line item, I don't see any major fluctuation. Any questions to this point? Just some concerns going forward. I mean, these are pretty much the same kind of things I've put in, in previous years. You know, we're very close to our constitutional tax limit for 2020. We're at 99.2%. We'll talk about sales tax in a minute, and, and, and we'll talk about the potential cuts of, of state aid as well in a minute. But we do have, you know, you know, a pretty, a pretty decent, or at least a modest fund balance now of 3.8 million unassigned. Also have put an attached sheet you can look at on your own, kind of gives a history of, you know, where our fund balance has finished in previous years. But I will point out, the, the United States Government Finance Officers Association guideline for unrestricted fund balance for a city of our size budget recommends two months' worth of general fund expenditures, which in our case would calculate to $6 million. So we're almost four. We should be six. So, but that is. So, but that is an improvement over the last few years. Again, again, you know, a couple of things to, to be concerned about going forward. You know, miscellaneous revenues, you know, pretty much remain flat for all the different things we charge for besides property taxes and, and sales tax and state aid and BPU payments. Our, our future healthcare cost liability for our GAZB-75 report, we should be getting our, our new report here probably within the next month. But that liability remains at $162 million. Very staggering number. We talked about our, our retirement costs are still large, about $3 million, but have been leveling off. But rates may increase next year based on how the stock market finished on March 31st, which is the state's year-end. And just a couple of last things to point out. We all know that our police and fire contracts, contracts have been expired since the end of 2015. And our, and we're waiting the court decision on that. And our CSCA contract has been expired since the end of 2018. Any questions or comments?
I don't have any. Joe, I just want to thank you guys for this report as usual. And like you, I think the finance committee has some serious concerns about things going forward.
I, I agree. And I guess that's kind of a lead in. Ryan's going to give us our first quarter report. And then we're going to, you know, talk about a few things that obviously have happened here in the last month or so in the world and, and, and in, in New York State in particular and and, and we, obviously we all have concerns. So I'll let Ryan discuss the, the first quarter report.
And before Ryan begins, I just want to let you know, Kim, during the remarks from the mayor, I will talk to the council a bit about some of the work we've been doing on the back end. I like this, okay?
All right. So can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So yeah, I'm just going to kind of cover in high, high level the Q1, actual revenue and expenditure results against budget. I'm just going to, you know, obviously send out the memo last week and just going to go over some of the key highlights. And then we also have some commentary relative to the outlook for the rest of fiscal 2020. So with that, I'll just kind of jump right into the revenues. Outside of our sales tax revenue, which we haven't received yet, but we will be getting here in the next few weeks. We're generally running below budget estimates. The BPU pilot payment in lieu of taxes, payments are running low. They're, they're both below prior year and budget in, in total. So we were down 73,007% to budget and 66,006% to prior year. And that was mainly driven by the electric division, which was below budget by 77,012%. Some other key revenue misses include parking violation revenue, which was down about 29,000. That's a 29% decline versus budget. Obviously some concerns there going forward. Looking at the first quarter sales tax payment, like I said, we, we did not receive it yet, but we were able to get the amount from the county last week. And so it's actually some, some good news here. The, the first quarter sales tax payment was 1.6 million. And that was actually $151,000 and an 11% increase over the first quarter of 2019. So, so some positive news, we're going to obviously need all of that going into the second, third and fourth quarters of this year with everything that's going on. And then, you know, just overall for the, for the full fiscal 2020, we do have six and a half million dollars budgeted for sales tax revenue. So once we collect that first quarter payment, we'll, we'll have collected about 24% of the budget compared to 23% that same time last year. So slightly kind of a payment from last year. Anyone have any questions on revenues? So on the expenditure side of things, there really weren't any big surprises. Salaries, benefits and contractual expenses in good position after the first quarter. We survived the first winter season where the DPW and parks over time basically flat to last year. Despite the mild winter, we did purchase about 58% of the salt budget. A little caveat here, we were contractually obligated to purchase a minimum amount of salt annually. And we've, we've met that requirement. And, and also, you know, of the 289,000 that has been spent, we still have about $100,000 on hand at the salt barn. So they, you know, assuming we don't have an extreme winter season at the tail end of this year, we're in pretty good shape. And then just looking ahead for the rest of 2020, obviously the, the main concerns that, you know, Joe and myself have at this point are on the revenue side and sales tax revenue specifically. Obviously, you know, it's the second, second largest revenue items in our budget and it's a huge unknown at this point. Looking, if you look at the final three quarters of last year, we received about $5.1 million in sales tax revenue. So I mean, if that drops off 10%, that's, it's a half a million dollars. If it's 30%, that, you know, it's a 1.5 million dollars. So it's just again, just a very big unknown at this point. And then, you know, other concerns include the BPU payments in lieu of taxes as well as state funding with all of the challenge that the state has currently putting together their budget. Are they going to cut aid to municipalities? Another big question that's out there. So other small revenue categories that, that are also at risk include parking that I mentioned earlier, court fees and fines. We have experienced lower interest rates this year. So interest income is potentially going to be down. And then right of way building permits is, is another revenue item that could potentially come in below budget. I don't know, Joe, if you have anything that you want to add or if anyone has any other questions for me?
No, I think that was, that was a great report, Ryan. I mean, you know, as Ryan said, the first quarter is pretty decent, but you know, the, the big thing is, you know, not just for us, but I think everybody in this crunch country is the unknowns going forward and I don't know, the mayor's going to talk about this in a bit, but you know, we'll, we'll, we'll just try to prepare as best we can.
Any other questions for anybody?
Yeah. Anything else for finance committee at all? Okay, that concludes our report.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to housing. There's a couple of items under there. Vicki, you want to talk about housing a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going to have a discussion on the impact of the pandemic, pandemic on pandemic, on the rents not being paid and whether there were any holds on evictions. You know, I've been kind of like talking to some people, but you know, mostly I hear from, you know, or, you know, people from my constituencies, where's my check? Everybody's still waiting for their $1,200 check, but as far as, you know, I haven't had, you know, anything, nothing, no trouble with rents or, you know, no threats of evictions from landlords. So that I have been, you know, because I have been, you know, like I said, I've been talking to people, but I don't know, it's kind of like to put it out there. Have you, have any of you heard of any of that? Brent or, you know, I was kind of wondering, Maria, Marie, Marie, you probably, if anybody, people will be calling your office if any of that was happening maybe. But I just personally haven't heard any stories of that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything at this point, but I'm, I'm sure that it'll, it'll start up, especially since we went through a couple of weeks ago.
Crystal, has there been anything from your department on, on that situation at all?
Sorry, had to unmute. Um, we haven't heard of anything at this point. We are we're gearing up with the CDBG, the anticipated CDBG money that, that will be coming in. Looking at a rental assistance program. We've been working to develop what that program looks like, what the guidelines are. We actually have a meeting later this week with some of our partner agencies. The biggest thing is we don't want to duplicate what other agencies are doing and what their resources are. In fact, we cannot duplicate as per HUD's requirements. So we are looking to meet with those other organizations later on this week to kind of pool our resource, get a good, good understanding of what each other has. You know, something that, that we're keeping in mind when developing this program. Tenants often will get assistance. It's really landlords that may not necessarily get assistance. So we're looking at how we can structure the program so that we have a good understanding of what tenants resources might be or what, what kinds of assistance they may have, whether it's through COI or the Department of Social Services or what other kinds of programs they may, may have access to. And then kind of figuring out where the gaps are. A lot of our landlords are, you know, their income is their rent that they're, they're receiving from their tenants. So we're looking to make sure we, we structure the program in a way so that it's not just necessarily helping tenants, because it will, but it's also helping those landlords that are depending on that income. So there will be more to come next week as this program continues to develop. And then we'll, we, we've got to be ready to hit the ground running when HUD does release those funds. So.
So I was wondering, are you working, is United Way also part of that? Because I know United Way has set aside a special fund for the COVID-19.
Yep, yep. United Way, um, the Community Foundation, Chautauqua Opportunities, CRIC code. You know, we tried to get a, a big cross section of all the agencies that, you know, have have access to other resources. We'll also be doing the same for, on the small business side of things too. So the, the allocation is $705,000. It sounds like a lot. But when we kind of break it down by how many landlords can we help, how many tenants can we help, how much can we help, for how long, it's, it's really not not going to go very far. So we're trying to be strategic and make sure that we do it in a way that we can leverage what other partner organizations have. Stretch it out as, as long as we can and have the biggest impact that it, that we can have. So.
Vicki, if I could add on to what Crystal said, one of the, one of the pushes for this idea of a rental fund was that in talking with other mayors across the country, I'm in particular, actually had a call with the mayor of Chicago. That was one of the biggest needs was being able to support the landlords and the tenants during this time. So Chris and I had talked about creating a fund with some of the, the money we received from the federal government, not taking it all for small business, but a portion to ensure that our residents have a place to live during this time. And so that our landlords can also be taken care of. I will note that as, as part of any type of agreement for accepting those funds, there's going to be some type of rental inspection. So we want to try to accomplish a couple of things with that. Number one, making sure that the tenant has a place to live. And number two, making sure that the landlord is accepting those funds, that they're keeping their conditions in accordance with our code.
It also gives us an opportunity to capture the rental registrations that we've had a hard time capturing since that program took effect. So is one of the requirements to participate. You've, you've got to fill out your rental registration.
That's a really good idea, Crystal. And Vicki, there is a moratorium on evictions right now, just as there is about utility shut offs. Neither, it does not mean you won't have to pay eventually. And that's why these rental assistance programs can help. It just means that right now you cannot be evicted and your utilities cannot be shut off. So if you know of any of those cases, let our office know. But I have not heard of anything. We haven't had calls in that regard. We have had some concerning repairs. And I think Crystal mentioned that at the last meeting that really right now they're only allowing essential repairs. So if you've got a leaking roof, a hole in it or something like that, that they will allow that to go forward. But anything else will probably have to wait until things improve and building permits and things are going to be allowed again in the city.
Thank you. Is there anything else on that subject? If not, I just, we also, we had, I thought it was a great, I felt really when we had this conversation, we had a conference call Thursday morning or afternoon with the Gateway Loft Projects. It was with the board president of the Community Helping Hands, Katie Castro, the executive director from Stella and Councilwoman Grubow, Councilman Sheldon and Councilman Nelson and myself and, and Crystal. It was, I, I felt really, you know, first time I felt that things were, were moving in a, in a right direction with the project. It felt good that Larry Squeezes had an opportunity. They have a 113 unit in Rochester. That's been for 10 years, I believe it's been going. He had nothing but good stuff to say about it. They're looking to, if you remember, the project is 110 unit here. And they, and I was looking at, they broke down the numbers and it looked like the highest number of tenants would be 294, I think it was, 97. Yeah. 94, 97. And so I'm, you know, because my head, I think it's 110, you think of like 500 people. You know, when you, but we had, the way they had the math broken down. It was pretty good. And they, everything that the city has kind of came with them.
Oh no.
We may have lost her.
It's frozen.
What did we lose? Crystal?
Vicki.
Vicki.
Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, we lost you.
I know, I'm still here. At least I'm still here. I gotta tell you, I've been going in and out. But some of the things that the city has, I know some of the land scape things that they have complied with. Also, even some of the issues that we've had last time. So I don't know if everybody received that report that, Crystal, did everybody receive that, what we were given? So maybe.
I'll send it to higher council, but I'll, I'll be happy to forward that to you tonight.
Well, but yeah, so there were some questions that the Strategic Planning Committee had. Had some of the things that they were, wanted to talk to them about, ask them about and some things that we had. So they had addressed it. And so I think it's going to be good for the whole council to receive that. They have, you know, the question was, do you have your funding in place? Yes, they said they have their funding in place. You know, totally, you know, don't want to, you know, I wasn't trying to be a Debbie Downer for the project. I think it's a great project because people do need quality life. People need to have, you know, a safe place, clean place to live. But I just don't want poverty on top of poverty, you know, stacked on. And, but it's, you know, I don't want us to look down 10 years from now and say, oh my God, what did we do? And I think that we're all doing, you know, we're being very diligent, doing due diligence with this project. And I'm very happy with the work that Crystal is doing and her people and it's strategic planning also. And so I know this, they're going to have some more conversation with the Strategic Planning Commission, the Planning Committee. And they were having, they're having a meeting tomorrow, I believe. And so there were some things that they wanted to ask the Strategic Planning Committee to maybe change their mind and, but as you know, we have nothing to do with this project. It goes through strategic planning, but we still have input. The city has a lot to say, you know, I, I feel that we have some things to say because it is our residents who are, who will be residing in these places. And so I don't know if Tom, if you want to add anything or Crystal or Brent or Maria, who were also on the phone. But I felt after the phone call, I did feel, I felt much better than I did the last time I left.
Yeah, I, I felt pretty good about the meeting and how it went. And I felt like they've answered a lot of questions and you know, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow's meeting. But, you know, it was, I think, hearing that Larry Squeezes had visited their facility in Rochester and was, had a lot of good things to say and he had photos of it. And we all thought it was a, a brand new facility and it here was 10 years old. We were like, wow, doesn't look like it's 10 years old. So you know, there's a lot of good things. I think they've answered a lot of questions. So we'll move forward tomorrow and I'll go from there. I don't know. Marie, I think was there too and.
Yes.
I think they answered a lot of the questions and addressed a lot of things, especially the jail diversion population. I think they answered a lot of the questions and addressed a lot of things, especially the jail diversion population. That was a concern that a lot of people had, so they've gotten rid of that group of population. And they're going to have these apartments too. So it's not going to be all low income or disabled people or homeless people, but. You know, you always hear people say, oh, there's an abundance of housing in Jamestown. For my job, the department, I've been in a lot of these units, and I would say there's an abundance of substandard housing in Jamestown. So I think this this project is a huge, gonna be a huge step up for a lot of people. Who can, you know, lift themselves up and and live in a better environment than they are currently. Because there's just too many of the units just have no permit to them. The landlords are not investing in them, and this whole pandemic is going to make that whole situation worse, in my mind.
One thing I also liked, they were going to be adding a fresh food, fresh food components to it, they're going to be putting a food mark in there. They're putting a credit union in there. They will have, what else was it? Oh, they would have some case managers on site. You know, in there, so there will be some people with some. I think this could be, you know, then they're going to be bringing an educational piece back in because Bulte right now is is gone. And so, but they are looking at bringing another educational piece into the project. So it, I just like, again, it was just a, I felt so much better. You know, especially again, I think mainly because of Larry's, his, his field trip.
Vicky, I would add, I agree with everything that's been said. I think the fact that Stell has managed a project of that size. In Rochester and after thirteen years still looks very, very well kept and maintained. The project in Buffalo Evergreen, I believe Crystal followed up with some peers that were in Buffalo or aware of that project. And felt that that was very well kept as well, that they had not had issues in either of the facilities that we were aware of. So I think a lot of the questions that we had were were answered. And I think finally, for for the first time, I had a level of comfort with this project that I did not have before. So I'm relieved to see that they have done their homework and compared to the project that we saw a year ago, it's been vastly improved. Considering the families, the children that will be there, the open space. I think a lot more thought was given, and I have to give credit to Crystal and her department. Because I think everyone asking for improvements made this a better project than it was a year ago. Very clearly a much better project.
I agree, Crystal, you and your staff have done an amazing job to get it to where it was. Even back when I first heard about the project, it's been, it's a totally different problem. Project, thank you, we thank you. And before we go on, I just, Crystal, if you would, kind of like, give us an update on the fire, you know, because. On Seventh Street, you know, ten people were displaced and so I didn't know if you had any updates on that.
Sure, so for those who don't know, there was a fire on Seventh Street. Last week, right, right near Seventh and Washington. There were a number of, there are four units, so all of the tenants were displaced, it's a complete loss, there's, there's no saving the building. The structure is is actually quite unsafe. A lot of pets were lost, which was really sad. The owner has boarded the building. We actually had to have him go over and fix some of the boards that somebody went over and ripped off. So he did that today. He's looking at working with his insurance company and getting some quotes on demolition. So we will likely go ahead and give him a demolition permit, considering how unstable the structure is. It's, it's one of those, you know, is it an emergency demolition? I would hate for somebody to to break in, you know, the the traffic in that neighborhood already has been really high. We've, we've had a number of people who have been asked to leave the premises, who are poking around. And Larry and I actually saw a handful of people trying to go into the building before it was boarded the other day. So I think, given the the amount of of foot traffic and, you know, just curiosity, I guess, of people in that neighborhood. I think the the best thing for us to do, you know, with regard to public safety is, once we, once. The owner gets the okay to go ahead with the demolition, we we move forward and and we go ahead and give them the permit for an emergency demolition. So we'll keep you all posted and keeping, you know, I know that. JPD has been monitoring, keeping their eyes on it and as is our department, our code enforcement officers swing by periodically throughout the day. Just to make sure nobody's trying to break in.
Vicky, would it be all right if we had the Deputy Fire Chief talk about the cause of the fire and some of the use of our resources?
Sure.
Certainly, yeah, it was an accidental fire, guys. I believe that one of the tenants attempted to put it out before he had called nine one one, which gave the fire probably a bit of time, undetermined amount of time. To grow in size before nine one one was contacted. Everybody evacuated the building safely before the firefighters arrived. Like Crystal said, there were a number of pets that did perish. There were ten people displaced, the Red Cross did assist, both at the scene and actually at the Red Cross office, they're trying to be careful around the COVID nineteen aspect as well. As far as cause, it was an accidental thing, though, it's possible that a candle may have been left unattended. The investigators were not able to completely determine that, other than it was combustibles stored too close to an ignition source. That was the official determination of the investigators.
Thank you.
Any questions, guys?
Just for the record, there were no major injuries or fatalities, correct?
That's correct, no civilian casualties, no firefighters were injured, it was just the pets that perished in there, unfortunately.
Thank you.
That's it for us, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on housing? If not, Brent, you want to go on to public safety?
Yes, we had the first two resolutions with the same finance ad, the first was the resolution to hire two police officers. The second resolution is to hire the computer specialists for the police department. The resolution we have is the public facilities. Request to install four new four hundred watt LED streetlights along North Main Street. Polls number two eight five four zero two eight four three zero two eight three six zero two eight three three five. And also to move the light from pole number two eight three two five to two eight three two zero. That is the resolution that we have. I'd spoken earlier to Mayor about the amount of personnel protective equipment that the city has at this time. And he believes that we are in pretty good shape, you know, the essential personnel. Who are working with the public, police, fire, anybody else who might be working with the public, has to work with protective equipment. I don't know if Deputy Chief Coons wants to address that, or Chief Nellings?
Sure, I can address it, but we've got plenty of personal protective equipment, we've been working with the county in order to protect ourselves. We've got surgical masks, gowns, and ninety-fives. We've been working with the county to maintain hand sanitizer in all the stations. Chief Nellings, if there's anything you want to add to that?
Sure, all our officers carry three masks, it's a requirement, they have, we have additional. If we need to replace them, they all have gloves, each, every person in our department's been issued in addition to that individual hand sanitizer. Today, ServePro came in and they basically did a thorough cleaning of the PD in the jail. We have additional cleaners available for the jail, a couple of other areas, our vehicles. So, yeah, we pretty much have everything on hand for now.
Good to hear.
I will note that the chief had mentioned that ServePro came in, they've actually, they actually did it for free. For us to come in to the police and fire to provide this additional sanitary cleaning as a public service.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of other items. Of course, we know Memorial Day is coming up. People, I don't remember that we actually passed a resolution approving the parade at this point, has anybody heard anything from the veterans about this? I know it's beyond, you know, the extension of our emergency through May fifteenth, but. The thoughts on that at this point?
Right, usually we have a notice by now and I haven't seen anything.
Jennifer, you haven't seen anything either, because it comes to the clerk.
Seen anything yet, they typically send us a letter, I think, a copy as to what, I think normally each council member receives as well. Or perhaps we forwarded out to you, but I haven't gotten anything from the Veterans Council, so.
Something else we will address next month too, if they do request it, but it's something, we definitely need to take a good look at.
Keep you posted too, because the, I believe the post commander is one of our retirees, so I'll be reaching out to him just to make sure that nothing's getting missed along the way.
Thank you. And then as we saw the notice of this rally on May first, the Chief Nellings sent everybody. I'm sure we have not received a request for a permit to have this rally on city property. And I wouldn't be, you know, there is the governor's executive order about prohibiting such things, you know, so we wouldn't be inclined to even issue it. They got a permit for that, but. Thought after speaking with other council members, you know, people do have the right to assemble as long as they're doing it safely. But we definitely think that we need to have some kind of police presence there. There was a big rally up in Buffalo, I think most of the people were in their cars and trucks. There were some people walking around and not distancing, you know, so they were kind of violating the order. So we want people to be able to express their opinion, but we wanted them to do it safely and not endanger the people. So I think that we definitely need to have some police available. It's a Friday night, I'm not sure if the state police are still doing the, you know, the drive-throughs in Jamestown too. Chief, I don't know if you want to address that?
Well, the plan for now is just to monitor it, we're aware of it. We are working with the state police, they're actually monitoring social media, so we can at least get a feel of what the potential crowd could look like. But for now, we're just kind of in a wait and see.
I would like to point out that a permit wouldn't be required for just a general gathering in the park. There wouldn't be any sound or things like that, so so a permit wouldn't be necessary. However, Brent, you did point out the fact that there is an executive order banning all social gatherings at this point. The one thing that is different in the city of Buffalo is they had actually notified their police department. That this was going to be in their cars only, which is completely permissible. A gathering of individuals of any size, where as of now, up until May fifteenth, is still prohibited under the governor's executive order. Anyone who violates that can be assessed a fine up to one thousand dollars.
Chief, do we know who this flyer, is there someone local? Is this more of a national or state thing? Is there someone here in the city that's coordinating this? Do we know anything like that?
That I don't, I mean, I sent you the flyer as soon as I got it.
And I guess, I, Councilman Russell and I spoke earlier about, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. You know, we, we don't obviously want to encourage it, but on the other hand, it's kind of like the kids in school. The more you discourage it, the more you could put gasoline on the fire, so and make it worse. Again, so with a police presence at some point and monitoring, I just, I wish we knew if there was someone, a contact person who. Someone from the city could talk to about what could be permitted and what couldn't be permitted and what would transpire if if things got out of hand, that sort of thing. But, you know, we do have, what, about a week and a half or so to. If you hear or see anything more, I mean, I don't know, is there going to be twenty people there, is there going to be two hundred people there? We don't really know.
Five.
Me a link, I'm sorry, sorry, Chief, go ahead.
That's all right.
My son sent me a link from the Western New York Now, and there was an interview with a woman who was in it. But I haven't had a chance to to look at it, but he was, he was telling me, Mom, you really got to watch this. And so I can sit, you know, I can text it to, you know, people, but I hadn't seen it, but you can look on the, again, the the Western New York Now, there was a, it's a, what, which one is it? Jason or Justin, it's an interview with him, with a woman who is talking about the rally to be held in Jamestown.
Okay, I'll look at it, I haven't seen it, but I'm sure if I. New York Now, you'll get it, so we'll look it up, so just keep monitoring it and see what happens. Is that it, Brent?
Just one final thing, we got something from the Renaissance Group about illumination ovation and light the night. This Wednesday, Thursday, asking people to put their porch lights on, actually, they want them on all week, starting at eight o'clock. WCA Foundation, it's supporting agencies, United Way, Chautauqua Region Community Foundation, Jamestown Renaissance Corp. Are asking people to thank our community's frontline heroes by putting on their porch lights every night at eight o'clock. And then on Wednesday, we're encouraging everyone to go on the porch at eight P M to applaud our frontline heroes and reach out to the neighbors to build community strength. A positive thing that we can do, and it says, let's share the love in Jamestown. Anybody else have anything?
Okay, that's it for public safety, go on to Public Works, Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President, we had the same resolution that finance had on the. The twenty nineteen sidewalk ramps, phase one, the change order. And I don't know if Vicky or Grant, if you had anything you wanted to ask, I, earlier today, I talked to Jeff regarding this and. I don't know if anyone else in the public, they wants to. And the next thing, the, the. The results of the bid opening regarding the Mill Street. Main Street, I'm sorry, Main Street Mill and pavement contract, and Jeff, I got your email and Lake Shore. Was the low bidder, Lake Shore Paving Company, at one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. I don't know, Jeff, do you have anything, anything else you wanted to say, you had, there were four bids that you received?
No, we, we, we received four bids, which was kind of outstanding, we don't usually get that kind of response. So we're really happy with the price, Lake Shore did the project, same project last year for us, they're very familiar with the conditions. Yeah, strongly recommend it.
Grant or Vicky, any comment on that? I, I would.
I like that we picked the local company or that it worked out that they were the least expensive, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, that was a good, it was good. And then there was another item for discussion, the proposed hiring of a new maintenance mechanic. And Jeff, can you?
Back to something we've been talking about over a number of years, we talked about it at the last budget council or the budget hearings. We, we currently have one maintenance person that knows the building, or we don't have any legacy or any backup, if something were to happen to Todd. And it's something, after talking with the mayor, we felt very strongly that we should be looking at this. Just, just for long term account.
When you say long term, are we talking in the, in the next six months or two months or?
I'd like to bring them on as soon as possible.
As possible.
I will add that the situation has changed very rapidly, but we originally had this also on finance, I think we pulled it off. So it is a discussion that we probably should have at a, at a different time. So it is a discussion that we probably should have at a, at a different time. There's a lot of moving pieces going on right now, so I'm not sure that this is going to be the most effective use of our, of our finances right now. But we did pull it off of finance, it must have stayed on Public Works, so apologies for that.
Okay, well, okay, that's all there was for Public Works, unless anyone else in Public Works Committee, Vicki or Grant had anything?
Jeff, just a quick question, given the situation, what's going on? Can you briefly explain what, how, how does all this affect any of the projects going forward? Road projects, things like that, do you know anything or anything you care with us at this point, briefly, just?
It's huge, because there's so many variables. We're not sure about how much time we're going to have, we're not sure how much funding we're going to have. You know, so we're trying to line things up to, to deal with, you know, different scenarios, I guess. We're, we're meeting later this week with the mayor to kind of go over some different ideas that we have. Ways to, if we have to cut, cut back the program.
So basically, what you might have, you're going to have a certain amount of things that you can do. And then you're going to have to prioritize to get the top priority.
We're, we're going to, we're going to put our full list together like we always do. And look at, at, you know, different phases, I guess, of what things we can trim if we have to.
Okay, just keep us updated on that, either mayor or yourself, let us know. Okay, that's it for, is there any other business from the council? If not, Mayor, you're, you're up.
Right, I have for executive session, I've got three items. One, regards to retirements and employment positions. Two, a claim to discuss through the Corporation Council Office, and three, inactive litigation. So three items for executive session. Just a few items for our general session, I wanted to have the clerk, Jennifer Williams, talk a bit about. The tax collection so far and any discussions on the current summer special event permits.
Sure, so on April 14th, we turned over the 2020 delinquent taxes to the county. That amount was about 2% higher than it was last year. Based on everything that was going on, we had had calls from concerned taxpayers. You know, I have the money to pay my taxes, but my children are out of work and they are not being paid and. So I, I think that the current situation had a lot to do with that. In January, we were trending up, and then March, we took, we took a pretty significant. Hit, the portion of the city taxes that were turned over was just over $287,000 higher than it had been. In 2019, so the city portion was about a million nine, just over a million nine turned over. Last year, it was a million six. So definitely so, some issues there we have had, now that the stimulus checks are out, we've had. Calls from people, so we are holding those payments until the county can get those taxes built into our system so that we can apply those directly. As far as special event permits go, the question of the parade did come up at our department head meeting. Again, still no word on that. We've had a few special events already canceled. The Run for Literacy, the Prendergast Library Run unfortunately has had to cancel, that's a big fundraising event for them. I was contacted by Sam Pellerito, the Kidney Walk will also not be happening this year, that's typically, I think, in July. There are multiple events that I have not heard from yet, I've been trying to reach out to different sponsors. I did connect with Zach Aggett today from Jamestown Renaissance Corporation. To talk about their upcoming Beer Mile run that was supposed to happen in June, they are canceling that. As far as hands-on Jamestown goes, they're looking into ways to still make that feasible. He's going to connect with John Williams to see if distancing wise, there's ways that they can still, on a much lower scale, have that take place. But he said he'd keep me in the loop on that, so I'll pass along any information to you all as well.
That's Jennifer, I will, I will add that you don't have to reach out to me, but. The World Series of Wheels and the World Series itself are still in limbo. We're trying to iron out a couple things and see how it goes, especially with the World Series. But as soon as we know, we will let you know.
Great, great. Yeah, it's unfortunate. There were a lot of new events this year that hopefully can still. Happen that were planned for late in the summer, so, you know, we'll see what, we'll see what happens as we go forward. It's just stuff, because we don't know what to tell anybody, so it's all kind of up in the air. The only other thing that the mayor had asked me to speak on were our minutes for all the boards, commissions and council minutes. Have all been uploaded to the eCode portion of our website. Leanne has been doing that from home and. She, she's in the portion now where she's changing the names of each file, so that's been a little time consuming. She has gotten through all of the council, both the voting sessions and committee minutes have also been uploaded and are being renamed.
Great, just so for folks that are aware, we, we normally would keep those minutes on the website. We've now made the decision to move those to our eCode platform where we currently keep the city charter code and new laws. That way, all of the minutes, all of the agendas, all the resolutions are text searchable. And it's going back several years now, so we've uploaded them all into there. It makes it easier, keeps it in one central location, and the minutes are getting uploaded as, as soon as they're done. You can go in there and the public can go in there and they can subscribe to updates, so whenever minutes are posted. Or agendas are posted or resolutions, they can instantly get an email. They can also search through those minutes as well, so. We're trying to move it off of our website onto a platform we've already paid for and own. And, you know, make it a little bit easier for people. Did we lose someone?
I don't know, everything just kind of shifted around though.
Okay, great, thank you, Jen, I appreciate it. I did want to add one other thing for the, for the clerk's office and generally. Marie, you had asked about electronic collection of bills and things like that, we are looking at different platforms. To manage different processes across the city. That would include the issuance or the payment of permits, fees, bills through an online portal. So we're looking to try to move that electronic as well, so if you don't want to fill out a paper form, you can fill out a special event application. Or license or permit online, pay online as part of it. Any questions on Jen's portion? I did want to briefly have the police chief just talk about how, or what the. Crime statistics have looked like or what the types of crimes are, so. Chief Snellings, if you could talk a bit about what you're seeing out there during this timeframe? If you're seeing a decrease in crime or types of. Services that we're rendering.
Sure, you know, as, as I said last month, our calls were generally lower, but we're starting to catch up. They ran the numbers, March through April for nineteen and twenty, and we're, we're only down by 1%. Same timeframe last year, we had 4163 calls for service and we're at 4119. Our domestic violence, March was pretty busy for us, we saw about a 32% increase. But that's kind of caught up, we're at comparatively between the two years, we're at a 5% increase. The raw numbers are 264 versus 252. Overdose, overdose calls have been significant. Comparatively between the two years, we're up 45%. We've had 33 this year versus 18 last year, and we had an overdose death over the weekend. I can send you all the calls if you guys want to take a look at them. Pretty much everything we've done comparatively for March and April between nineteen and twenty.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of the types of that we announced an increase of. Even though the calls for service are down, we're seeing more domestic violence. And it requires a bit of a different response than our normal calls, so thank you for that.
Yeah, Chief, I would love to see those, and I'm honestly sadly not surprised by what you saw.
Yeah, I mean, they were predictable, I think, across the country. Everybody in law enforcement were, were predicting specifically with domestic violence and, and the overdose issues.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, so I would like to move on, just have the deputy fire chief. If you could please talk about how our rookies are doing actually with the Fire Academy? And what's going on with that situation?
The rookies are doing well, the Fire Academy has actually been closed since mid-March, so we kind of adopted a modified training schedule for them to keep them working. So we've been training them in-house. We've been waiting for some guidance on what the academy ultimately is going to do from the Office of Fire Prevention and Control. The director of the academy and several of the personnel that are assigned to that building in Montour Falls have been deployed downstate. But we have been getting regular updates every couple weeks on what the academy presumably is going to do, which up to this point is just a result of them, they kind of keep. Following the governor's directive, they kind of keep moving the training. Back another two weeks, back another two weeks, back another two weeks kind of thing. So at this moment, the state fire training is suspended statewide, including the Fire Academy through May fifteenth. We're going to continue to work with them, train them as much as we can in-house. There is a possibility that some of the training that we're doing in-house, since we do have state certified instructors may count. But we won't have an answer on that until the academy basically reconvenes. We're expecting that they may be doing a truncated version of what training remains for them. They're about seven weeks into their 12-week program, so they're just over halfway. So pending further guidance, we still continue to work them on a day schedule, they're running calls with us. They're getting used to the way we do things and how to operate our equipment, so their learning curve has actually been. Kind of a blessing in disguise, because we've had actually more opportunities to train with them than we normally would, since we have had them at home.
Great, thank you. You're welcome. Any questions on that? Forget it, just give you guys an update since we have three new firefighters that were out at the academy and then all of a sudden forced back here and. A little bit about a fire firsthand, so. Alright, so I just have just a couple more items for you guys and then a few other things, but. Most of what I wanted to talk about have already been brought up, the C, the CDBG grant, which Crystal already talked about. Jeff had brought up a bit about the summer projects. I did want to give Zach Altshuler a couple minutes to talk about website upgrades. We talked, we mentioned early on that we were considering upgrades to our current website. And so I wanted Zach just to talk about some of the things he's found in dealing with certain website companies. And information about a resolution that we're considering putting forward to you guys, so. With that, I'll turn it over to Zach, I don't know if you're able to share your screen or if you wanted to?
Yeah, I'm just going to share my screen just to show you guys, PowerPoint I put together. Can you guys see my screen, okay? So, I just wanted to start out by showing you guys, obviously, our website, which you're. Which you're very familiar with. Essentially, you know, this is, the website has been, been around for a little while now. It's kind of a do-it-ourselves kind of website, it wasn't built by a, a company. By professional website designer, it was, it was kind of built in-house. And it works pretty well, we have a decent, we have a lot of content on here. Unfortunately, it's a little bit confusing to get around. And it is not necessarily up to date as far as things such as security. Or ADA compliance is concerned, so I just wanted to show you guys a couple of websites. We've had, got five quotes from some website design companies that are. That specialize in local website design. So I just put together just some that were, people that read of cities or municipalities that were similar sizes, show you kind of what. We can get for upgrading our website. Essentially, this is Royal Palm Beach, Florida, which I'm sure the weather is much nicer there. But as you can see here, a bit more updated design, kind of everything is here, this is very good for mobile browsing, which our website is not necessarily the best for. Have these mega menus here, and as well as this, which is kind of emergency alert information, which we don't really have on our. Ability to do on our website right now. Obviously, due to COVID-19, that's a really, really important piece of communication to our residents. So we were really trying to focus on trying to improve that communication to residents. Through a more. Robust emergency alert system. So, as you can see here, many of these websites are somewhat similar, I just took a screenshot of just the kind of front page. Of all these websites, these websites are just designed by one of the five companies I got a quote from, just pulling off their. Off their proposals. So you can see there's a little bit different design on each, on each website. Fortunately, this one is not loading. And as you can see here, just in the screenshot, they have a similar. Sort of alert system, pop-up alert system, these mega menus up top. And the like. Another one up here, this is, as we go in Illinois. Very similar website there and very good for mobile browsing. Essentially, is that a little bit easier to get around than, than our site? This is another website up here, as you can see, up top, there's emergency alert, that is for COVID and kind of has a link to kind of continue on. Again, more of these mega menus up here, which kind of gives it more easier flow to the, for the. User to browse the site. The same here, this is a really nice site here with a nice banner on top, just kind of putting up information about COVID-19. Really important to do as well as, you know, having these menus up top as well. A lot of these menus up top really focus on, and a lot of these websites really focus on trying to. Put the information that our residents look up most on our site currently. They use, you know, site analytics and cursor heat maps to figure out the best places to both put them and. What our residents are actually looking for on these sites. So they can really be able to customize the site for our, for our residents and then what they really need. Essentially, there is vast array of website designers and hosts that provide a wide range of security options. In 2019, there were over 140 attacks on local website governments. Including citizen information held for ransom, these attacks increase every year. These cities range in size from Atlanta to New Bedford, Massachusetts, it's not really, it's not just big cities that they get attacked, it's, it's cities of all sizes. The Americans with Disabilities Act requirements have actually gotten pretty stringent over the past few years. Section 508. Applies to eliminating information technology barriers, people with disabilities, which 18.7% of the US population. Does have some type of disability which impairs their online access. So it's really important for our state to be able to be more accessible with those who are disabled. Almost all providers now create websites up to the WCAG 2.0 standard, which is the new international standard of accessibility. I can tell you that this is probably the most lengthy portion of when I'm on calls with website designers. On marketing to local governments is this right here, there's been a rash of lawsuits all over the country. On ADA accessibility or rather inaccessibility by residents. And these cities have had to, you know, settle for, for tens of thousands of dollars, so. This could be quite costly to not do and. to the requirements. And frankly, you know, as I was saying, the ease of use of our website is really, really important. Hopefully, a new website will help facilitate some more online transactions, you know, putting on new phones and, you know, saving our departments and freeing them up to be more productive. This will save our residents time, hopefully saving them from making a trip to City Hall, maybe with the current crisis with them not being able to go to City Hall. This could, you know, allow for a little bit easy ease of use here and help of our residents get what they need to get done. And kind of creating more feedback portals for our residents to pinpoint where and what problems they want to address in the city and kind of let departments take on the problems and more organized. As I was saying before, a lot of present professional website designers use analytic analytics and cursor heat maps to highlight what residents look for and need most. Professional training is provided by the vast majority of these providers. And they help train our employees on the backend of the site in our content management system, which is a little bit clunky right now on our website. So hopefully, we will be able to get a little bit easier use for people and get a lot more people trained how form functions and maybe to be able to put more of the things that they do online. The cost right now, currently, we're very cheap for our website, and this would be a pretty significant increase in cost. Current cost of hosting a website is two hundred dollars a year through Eagle Zip. These are kind of set up to be like all-in-one shop. They provide redesign, our security hosting and hands-on support as well as training for the using the actual site. So they are really they're really kind of set up to be that one stop shop, and they're specifically for local governments that have a lot of experience doing this. And right now, time is of the essence. This could be eligible for possible FEMA reimbursement. As I was noting before, as you saw, all those websites had emergency alerts. Many of these websites allow residents to sign up for email and text alerts into their platforms. So, you know, this could potentially be the development cost for the website could potentially be FEMA reimbursable. That would cover seventy-five percent of the development cost. And if we can get this, if we can get the contract signed before September of this year, which would be end of the disaster declaration, then we can, then we can potentially put this towards our fee reimbursement. The city will be I sent around an email earlier to everyone, but I just want to show you kind of the cost at each of the companies provide us. That first column there is development cost. As you can see, it's it varies a little widely, but it's generally around twenty thousand dollars to develop the website. And there is a pretty significant cost kind of year-to-year. The the maintenance, support and hosting costs are generally are by year. So that rate is for anywhere from about twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars. So sometimes, you know, that's or deferred to later years. But typically, that's a that's an annual cost which provides maintenance on the site, all support and hosting and security. That that's all I have. Is there any questions or comments?
Just just a question on timeframe, like we're going to have more info coming out and when would take effect or when would you like to do this? I mean, I guess the biggest concern would be the cost and how it's going to be paid for over the long term. You know.
Right, and then we understand it's not appropriated for this year. I mean, we would love to get it done as soon as possible. You know, all these companies have sent essentially when they send you this proposal over, they send a contract over. So it would be great if we could get this done as soon as possible. We are ready to write a resolution for it should be, you know, as we discuss this and find the right website for us. These costs are in line with Dunkirk recently had a contract recently executed contract to redesign their website, which was in line with these costs. I think it was about high teens for the cost of their website.
Couple things that is as a Chair of Finance, I want to get into a little bit more of this concern, as I stated in my email, is and we discussed tonight, is we have some serious concerns financially coming forward with the unknown. And if really we can get some reimbursement, I want to see that. And I want to see in your email, you also mentioned some local companies. I want to see where that comes in, first of all. It, you know, all these places here, including my company, are still not working. If we can keep the money locally, I want to try to do that. And fourth, which of these options are you planning on recommending at this point in time? If you were given the option today, which which option would you choose, I guess?
I believe I would go with Civics Plus. They recently redid our BPU.
Which one is that, though? You didn't give us names.
I believe they're come they're coming for.
Okay.
So I would I would go with them. They did our Board of Public Utilities website. And they received high marks from them, and they're very professional. They've done thousands of sites across the country and are are very highly regarded.
I mean, I'm all in favor of getting us up to speed and in not getting tagged with some not being compliant, but yet on the other hand, we just told Jeff, we can't have a maintenance mechanic because we don't have the money. And we have to figure out our priorities. Can we upgrade ours to make those compliant or is that not possible? What are the true options, I guess, is what I need, I would like to see.
Right, right. I think it would be very difficult for us to to make our website compliant. As I I I do not have that expertise to do it.
I'm gonna say, I'm not here to argue that point, but I want to see it. I want to see it in front of me.
Can I ask you a question? Zach, I'm wondering, are you familiar with the county's website and who did that? And I mean, it it seems like a pretty good one to me, but.
Civics Plus did that one.
They did, okay. Well, that's people, you know, that's a good thing that people should look at that. It's I think that works well. Yeah.
This is Marie. The BPU did go through a lengthy search before they settled on the company and they spent a lot of time revamping the BPU website. So they did do a lot, made a lot of adjustments, and I'm glad to see that you are discussing accessibility features because I brought that up at the BPU meetings, that you really have to get into that and get this working. In fact, right now, there are complaints from people about the emergency COVID information not being signed, that there are no interpreters available for for people who are deaf, who can't read normal English. It's not the same as American Sign Language. So whatever we can do to get that information out in a format that people who can't hear audio, it's really important. So, you know, I I'm always in favor and I I understand the the financial aspect of this, but there are people who are going out looking for non-compliant entities, and it wouldn't take much to end up on the other end of a lawsuit.
Would it would it be appropriate to have a more formal presentation, whatever, or recommendation at the first work session in May and then voted on in May? Is that given enough time or? I mean, we vote next week and this is kind of new. I don't know how the people feel about it. I just just throwing it out there. You know, it's a couple more weeks till the first work session and then, you know, another month down the road, we could vote on something if we had something concrete.
Honestly, I would prefer if we can push it at least till next month because I think there's I'm not, Marie, I'm a hundred percent in agreeance that I I we need to look at the option and how we can update to being compliant. There's no doubt about it. But I don't think a decision by all of us in a week's time would just getting this information, especially me being the financial person. I'm looking, I'm sure Joe has too, is looking at every little aspect of this and and how and what are we going to do? And and can we do something in the meantime till we get the proof that this development cost is going to be reimbursed? You know.
No, I agree with.
That's a huge, that's a huge savings. I mean, you're talking anywhere from twenty-one thousand to twelve thousand reimbursement of that initial cost. It's a lot of money. I don't want to lose it, but on the other hand, if we're not going to get it, we got to make up that cost somewhere.
Yeah, no, Kim, I'm not disagreeing with you there. I just, you know, whatever we can do to improve what we have and make it compliant, you know, I'm just speaking on behalf of the people that disabilities that need to see some of these things in a more user-friendly format, especially people with low vision, that you can adjust the font and things like that, which I don't think our website currently does. I do understand, and I'm not saying we've got to vote on it, you know, at the next meeting. I just think we need to be looking at this, and I appreciate the effort that's going into this.
I wanted to add.
I just have a comment too. I understand the financial stuff ever too, you know, because you always hear about when are you guys going to update that, you know, because you to get a permit, you got to go down. You know, why do I have to go down to get the permit? Why can't I fill the permit out online? Why can't I send it online? Everybody else is in the twenty-first century. How come the city of Jamestown? You know, I get that a lot and I understand the financial piece too, because if we can't pay for it, we can't pay for it. You know, they're always here about the website.
I think I wanted to, this is the initial conversation, just we wanted to present that to you guys, just some of the findings that we had going out there looking for that information. We were gonna, we wanted to let you know that we found out that it may be FEMA reimbursable, which is why we brought it up today. But we don't have a resolution in front of you guys. We just wanted to bring it up. And we want it, we will have a more thorough brief for you guys. I agree. I think this will probably be more so in May, but we wanted to at least remove it now so you guys can start to think about it. You guys can also let us know if you know of other places that we should start to look at. But we also just wanted to give you an update during this time when many of you have asked about what we're doing electronically. We have had Zach calling out and actually talking to different companies about ways we can improve what we have in terms of getting communication out to our residents. So Kim, you're absolutely right. We'll make sure that we've got a full brief for you guys. We don't have a resolution, like I said, in front of you currently. But we will get that to you guys and we'll make sure that we have it for the May work session. I see kids popping in. I see cats popping in. All kinds of Zoom fun going on over here. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
I just have one other item and then that's all I'll have. I did want to address some of the issues that Joe and Ryan and Kim brought up with the budget. Every day, I sit on calls with other mayors across New York and across the country. And I will tell you that we really do not know what this COVID nineteen crisis is going to do to our city's budget. We are projecting, and I will tell you that we met with our internal finance team late on Sunday evening. We were projecting anywhere from a one million dollars to a four million dollar deficit. There's a huge impact on our budget. We just don't know what sales tax is going to do. And we are lucky where we have a lot of our property taxes have already been collected. So we have enough to continue floating us forward. But unless we look at or unless we actually get some type of either federal or state aid, which has been contemplated but been pushed off for several months now, we are looking at trying to make that gap and to fill that gap. We are working on a plan to try to put some things in place to deal with a potential deficit. We are going to go to the Finance Committee first to talk about that and to look at the inner workings of it, and then we will present a much larger plan to the council and to the public. But the biggest issue we face is what do you do with a gap that size? A gap that actually exceeds what our fund balance is. That could put us in a negative position going into next year. So we want to be careful of that, but there's also some time. I want to be very clear about that. We do have some time to kind of wait and see if there will be any type of a federal or state stimulus coming to municipalities. That's been talked about both on a federal and a state level. But we also kind of need to see what sales tax is going to be next quarter to better project where we're going to go. So more to come on that, but I do want to be, I do want to let the council know that we're looking at it. One of the biggest things that we have all agreed in terms of internally is that we do not want to have to lay anyone off here in the city, which will require us to work with our employees, work with our unions, work with our budget to try to make that happen. That's my biggest goal, and I think that's our internal team's biggest goal, is to make sure that we do not have to lay people off during this very difficult and unprecedented time. I can't guarantee that if we're looking at a four or five million dollar budget gap. But anywhere in between, we are working very hard to try to come up with a plan to prevent that. So sorry to be doom and gloom, but the reality that we are that we are facing, I know Kim has pointed it out and other folks have as well. But we are working to try to figure out what what needs to be cut, what projects are going to be going forward, what projects are going to be held off. You know, what things we need to do immediately, especially recognizing that there might not be a lot of events and things going on this summer, which could potentially save us some money in the long run. But we're working on it. As a city, we recognize it's there. We're going to be working shortly with the Finance Committee to formalize a plan. And we're going to have to take some very tough and difficult measures going forward. And it is not a good position to be in, but it's a position that every other city across New York State is also going to be in. So are there any questions on that? It's not often I leave you guys speechless, so I appreciate that. Thanks. So with that, that is all I have. I just want to remind remind you, Tony, I have three items for executive session. No action, I believe, is required on those items. Tony, you still there?
Do you need a motion to go into executive session?
Can't hear him now. I don't know why.
I don't know why either.
There you go. Now you're there.
Am I there?
Yep.
You hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My question was, is are we being streamed? We have to take care of how's that work?
Yep, as soon as you guys decide to go in executive session, I will turn off the live streaming. So I'll just ask you guys to hold on and stay where you're put, where you're at. But I just didn't know if there's anything else for the public session.
Okay, that.
I just moved to go into executive session.
All right, she beat me to the punch, so. A second to that.
Second.
Kim, all in favor?
I.
Posed. Okay, we will go into executive session.
If you guys just hold on just for a minute, and I will stop the live streaming.
I think you're good to recording one off.
Yeah, I see.
It's live on custom live streaming service.